Four, first reading of the 5,000 series.
I love reading 5,000 series.
This is.
This is what you're.
Second only to the 6,000 series.
Well, we have a number of board politi-- you know, we regularly get CSBA sample policies. They're often updates that are based on case law or on, on new ed code legislation. And we go through those policies on a regular basis to make sure that we keep all of ours updated. It's nice at this point that we've gone completely through all of our own board policies, that we're starting the process of just review and update, review and update. And that took years, didn't it?
I have to tell you, in one of my lectures in my class at the university, I had brought in the stack of policies and showed them to the students.
All right.
To give them an idea of how board, school boards spend their time.
There we go.
Or attend a meeting.
And the, the suggested revisions are shown here. Robin is here to really answer any questions about them if you'd like to go through them.
I certainly will. I do want to add to something that Brian just said, though, about the adoption or the revision of the smaller number of policies and administrative regulations we're getting. We asked our CSBA person, I don't know what she's called exactly, but she's been our liaison, our contact, Kitty, about how other districts do their revisions. And she said, you know, you're the only district that has the board. Really look through all of that. Most of them just adopt the new CSBA models as they come through. So I think we're getting closer to that, but I still think we, I mean, we would obviously always bring them forward, but because we've made such an attempt to go through and clean ours up and get them updated, we have been using the CSBA templates. I've always noted in my notes when we've revised things, things that are particular to the board, so we have that history on what to keep including because our board has wanted that, so we'll, we'll continue. I have a big stack of that and Linda Steele keeps, she knows right where it is, too, and she looks at it, so we have a copy of all of that. But we are moving closer to that version that most of the other boards use. So we'll go forward.
We did hear at one of our meetings that for, what, $750, they'll come in and check every one of your policies, top to bottom, just to make sure they're all in compliance and all.
From CSBA.
CSBA.
Well, we have spent so many hours. It's amazing how much over the last, I, really, well, the six years I've been here. We started this quite a while ago with stacks like this, and we're down to like getting the reviews now every quarter. So it's great. You, many of you have been a part of that long process. So thank you.
This is a general question rather than specific, but since we're kind of talking about this, how do we share the new language with staff? For instance, with the cyberbullying piece.
Good question.
I'm just curious how, how you roll that out with them.
What we do, and we're getting to that point where it's easier now because we have so many fewer, is that we will bring it to either a joint principals' meeting if we feel like we need to actually explain it in person, or we send it out. For instance, with the conduct one that we just revised, I sent that out to principals, oh, I don't know, three weeks ago, something like that, when we first were getting it to a point where it was ready for the version to come to you. And explained the differences and had them check, asked them to check with their assistant principals in particular on that one, because I wanted to make it clear about the cellphone piece and the cyberbullying addition. That's how we normally do it. We'll send one that is particularly important to the onsite. Not all of them are ones that, you know, are, are part of what they look at all the time. I often refer to them, though, and when the site, when principals have questions, I'll often copy it for them.
Dr. Noell.
Are we going to talk about the discipline?
Yes, we, yeah. Well, we'll talk about.
The 5,000s, I guess?
Right now, we're in the 5,000 and just going, I'm just gonna, if you have any things you want to specifically ask about regarding the changes.
I do about 5144, but I'll wait for my turn.
Yeah, I want this issue of cyberbullying.
So we're on cyberbullying.
Certainly, in the 5131.
5131.
Okay?
Yes, I had a question regarding BP 5131 in two areas. One, in the area of number three regarding cyberbullying. I'm, I'm happy that we included this and that it's sort of clarified there. One of my concerns is the, I guess, the definition of it, or where it identifies it as violence, bodily harm, or substantial disruption in accordance with the entitled, with the section entitled bullying, cyberbullying below. I guess I'm, I'm wondering if a student were, if a student wanted to challenge, for example, their, you know, discipline on the basis of this policy, and they pointed to the point, to the fact that although they had engaged in what would be considered cyberbullying, that it hadn't led to violence, it hadn't led to any bodily harm, and there hadn't been any real substantial interruption or disruption, because I'm not sure what that actually means. Let's say it makes the student so depressed that they just sit in class and don't, the student, the target, so depressed that they just sit in class and don't really do anything. You can't really call that a disruption, but yet it's clearly having an effect. But even if it didn't have an effect, even if it had no effect whatsoever on the student, wouldn't we want to be able to stop it from continuing?
Well, the answer is yes.
And I, and I shouldn't say it has no effect on the student, because it probably would, but let's say no discernible effect on the student.
So, and are you?
You read the bottom of page one?
I'm sorry, yes.
Yes, under where it says harassment, yes.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, my, my point is, I'm just wondering if there's language we can put in there that isn't so extreme, that says just, you know, mental anguish or something.
Are you questioning that emotional suffering's taken out, or?
Yeah.
And again, we're using the language from CSBA template. And Craig Price and Davis Hayden, I read all of these, I mean, we, we looked at all of these, and Craig voiced his opinion on this as well. I know what you're saying, though. How do, how do you, what's in here that shows it can just be, well, emotionally damaging to the victim?
Yeah. I mean, I think we should, we, I feel like we have a responsibility to at least try to protect the emotional well-being of our students on campus, or even not on campus.
Mr. Herron?
Mrs. Parker?
If I could just address that point. And the reason it's there, Mrs. Cordero, is I think that that's what's in the law and what we are starting to see out of court cases, where students have taken districts to court over, actually just over suspensions, around this issue of how disruptive was it? And courts so far saying substantial disruption. It's not just sitting in, in mental anguish and feeling bad, it's substantial disruption. And I think that that's, you know, why Mr. Price was going this route, because that's what's in the law and what's starting to come out of the court cases.
And what you don't have here is what we get from CSBA that has like a big section above changes that states recent court cases and refers to them. And I don't recall that exactly. It probably, because it's been a few weeks since I looked at that, but that's usually what it's referring to, so I, I agree with Mrs. Parker.
It's also substantial disruption is used in cases where the activity takes place off the campus.
Yes.
Outside and public, but because it causes substantial disruption on the campus, we can then take action.
Absolutely, and that's part of the new part of it, yes.
I, I, I'm sorry, I don't really mean to belabor this, and I know I am, but, but I guess my concern is how, what, what in this policy would allow us or help us to protect students who are the victim of cyberbullying if it's not having a serious disruption on campus? I'm think, I'm imagining, for example, students who just internalize it and become depressed, so they're not acting out, they're not doing anything that's causing disruption, they're in, they're behaving, they're dealing with it in a very passive way. But I'm thinking, for example, in, in response to the spate of teen suicides that we have experienced recently, where would we be able to step in and stop that before it got to the point where that student was so depressed that they chose suicide? If they're not acting out, if they're not, it's not violent, how do we, how do we discipline the, the person who's bullying within the context of this policy? And I guess that might be a broader question. Does the law allow us to discipline a student in that context?
If I may say something here, in, I've actually had to counsel students who are being bullied and counseled on the other side, too, the bullying students. And in general, what you're going to find is that there will be counseling involved if it is of a nature that is either just the bullying or the bullied student because of cyberbullying. So I think that substantial disruption could thereby be documented by counseling. If the student was unable to get their homework done, was depressed and so forth, then you would have counselors that could be asked to testify. Beyond that, if, if there's no actual counseling, if there's no outside behavioral thing, what are we to do? There's, it has to actually have some kind of a documented behavioral issue being brought up, which is what I think this is referring to.
So I guess what I was going to say, too, it could be substantial disruption to a student's learning, his ability to be in, I mean, that's a broad definition of it.
So I guess I need to just understand then, in order to address cyberbullying, and I'm talking about in the context of California State Ed Code or other laws that might apply, we have to focus on the impact then rather than on the act itself. So the act itself is not enough to discipline. There has to be an impact.
I believe you are pretty close to correct there.
Okay, okay.
Not the lawyer, though, it was Craig was here for that one, but I think that's pretty accurate.
Okay, okay. I have, I have one more question on this one. Okay. And then the other one was on number five on page two of this. And that was just this discussion of laser pointers, which I'm not sure how popular they are anymore, but I was wondering why laser pointers were specifically addressed in this policy as opposed to any other technology that might be equally disruptive, especially given that they're not particularly common anymore.
I actually don't know specifically why that, that's not a new part of the, yeah.
I thought it was because of the damage to vision.
Because potentially damage.
Yeah, I mean, that's why they were originally out.
Dr. Noell?
I want to go back to number three, if I may, because I share Mrs. Cordero's concerns. I don't know, to me, this is just requiring a linkage to, to violence, bodily harm, substantial disruption is just too strict a test. That would not have covered that suicide that has made national news. That was the person that did the harm themselves. Nobody hurt the kid physically. And I'm, and I'm wondering whether, whether maybe we, if we thought along a different line, and I don't have the language here well worked out, but not limited to cyberbullying, intimidation, hazing, initiation, et cetera, affecting the climate, the, the learning environment, affecting the climate. And I haven't worked, I haven't played that out, but, but that, working out what that means and the implications of that. So that, that basically that, you know, erode, that, you could say destroy, but at least that erode the positive learning environment and climate and introduced elements of, of anxiety and fear. I'm free associating, but you got the idea.
Maybe you can get back with Craig for the next.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, I've written down your, some of your language, Dr. Noell.
I think, I, I think probably all read this and wondered why things like ridicule, emotional suffering.
Yeah.
Social cruelty and friendships were all taken out, because those are the things I think we probably think, you know, are so damaging when it comes to bullying, but I'm quite certain that they probably came out because they're subjective and hard to define and wouldn't stand the legal test. So it may be that we are limited and constrained by what, what threshold we can, it can rise to, but we might be able to include a sentence that says something like, where it says substantial disruption, including damage to the learning environment, which might give us some more latitude.
Okay, I will, I will.
And climate, and we've actually got measures of climate in, in the things that we're, we're talking about doing. Don't even link it, I mean, we, there's an item on the Healthy Kids Survey, talks about fear and intimidation. I mean, that's evidence.
If there is something that's in the information that we've gotten from CSBA that links to exactly why these words are taken out, I'll put it in a board brief. I believe that would be before we would meet.
Yeah.
And then I'll also look into adding language.
And, and I have one other thought, Mr. President, and the idea of, well, how do you link it to off-school? How do you get off-campus with this? You get off, one way to get off-campus is that because the, you're talking about relationships that are formed on campus, then the bullying follows the relationship off-campus.
Yeah, that's where the court cases are coming from, is the off-campus cyberbullying.
But it's hard, it's hard to define something that gives us jurisdiction off-campus, but if it's.
That's what the substantial.
If you're talking about relationships where there's kind of continuity, but, you know, the relationship, their, their colleagues, their schoolmates, and off-campus, one is bullying the hell out of the other one, off-campus.
There are, there are court cases that say substantial disruption in your situation, which happens off-campus. If it, if it comes to campus and becomes a topic of conversation and action on campus.
That does it?
Then that does it.
Yes.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
I have a question on page three. And first, I'm happy to see the change that at least will allow personal electronic devices solely for academic purpose as directed by school staff members. You know, I think that's a step in the right direction. I think we're going to see more problems with this particular issue as we get more schools wireless. But I guess I have two questions. One, what does "as directed by school staff members" mean? And two, just give you a hypothetical, there's this, I want to read War and Peace, and Susan wants to read War and Peace, and we go sit on a bench on the campus. I pull out the book and start reading, Susan pulls out her iPad and starts reading. How can you say one is right and one's wrong? Now, if the teacher said to read War and Peace, and we did that, is that under "directed by school staff member"?
If you have, yes, if directed by school staff. What we're trying to put in here, and this, actually, this paragraph did not come from CSBA, this came directly from Davis and me working with Craig Price, and Craig Price actually wrote this. I guess maybe Davis helped with that, too, so did I. But what we're trying to say is, the part that we're limiting is the social piece on the cellphone, talking, you know, the stuff that we're trying to have not happen just so that kids are more, you know, interacting with each other and all. It's not to limit someone using their, their iPad or another kind of electronic device for something that the school, any staff member has said, yes, you have permission to do that.
You can, you can go on and look, do a research paper on the JFK 50th anniversary of his death.
Exactly.
They can go out into the, into the garden and.
What you're bringing up is something that's not, we were looking at in the classroom because the staff is directing it, the teacher's having.
That's what I thought you were.
Exactly, but there you go with something that.
But what does that mean?
We should be permissible to read a book on an iPad outside of the classroom.
We wouldn't prohibit anyone from reading War and Peace.
And then just let me, let me finish on that. We've taken out of this paragraph, this comment must be turned off from the first bell until dismissal, end of school day. We've taken it out of here, but we've left it in the fine print in a note on page 11 under the disciplinary section. And I guess my question is, can you have it as a disciplinary note but not have it, and I know you answered this for me.
Right.
Mrs. Swawsky, but it, it just seems that if it's, if it's there, shouldn't it be someplace in policy if it's a note to the disciplinary? I just, I just.
Well, we're fine taking that whole thing out if you'd like.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make the same change in the.
Mrs. Parker, so.
Well, no, I, I mean, my personal belief is that, especially given the issues that we see in discipline constantly.
With cellphones.
That, with cellphones in particular, but it can also be other devices as well, that this policy needs to stand. I, I'm thrilled that it's clarifying that for academic purposes, I mean, the reality is right now, the teachers have said, for example, if you're in a digital technology class, use your cellphone. Sure, you know, ask permission from the teacher, use your cellphone, snap a picture, upload it, use Photoshop on it to do whatever project. That is, that's actually already currently happening, and so I'm glad that this could be clarified for academic purposes. But I do think that that line, with the exception of the use of personal, I don't know that it's been taken out, I don't know that it was, I, I guess I, because I didn't look back at the, the old policy, I don't know if that's crossed out here somewhere.
It's actually, the part that's crossed out is the first part of that sentence. Oh, you're talking about policy, sorry.
Yeah.
It's been taken out of the policy.
So my suggestion would be that after students may possess or use on school campus personal electronic, electronic devices solely for academic purposes as directed by school staff members, period, then the same line is transferred over that says, otherwise, such devices must be turned off from the first bell until dismissal.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I just say, as long as we're going to have it, it should be in the policy, not just as a footnote.
Yeah.
And I think it's important to, to lay it out when, what the parameters are, so I agree.
Okay. Mrs. Cordero? Hi, Mrs. Parker was next.
That's what I wanted to talk about.
Oh, okay. Mrs. Cordero?
Well, as some of you may remember, I was opposed to this addition of this language from when we adopted it, and I'm still opposed to it. And I'm, I'm just philosophically opposed to policies that we sit here on the dais and acknowledge are going to be enforced subjectively or, or so, I should say selectively, that if it says you can't have them on during, from the time school starts till the time school ends, but somebody's reading War and Peace, we're going to say, okay, but if somebody else happens to be reading, you know, High Times, we're going to say, no, you can't. Okay? To me, that just, that just isn't, I mean.
My comment would be the same. If, if you're reading High Times on your, whatever vehicle.
Why am I going to be reading?
And I'm reading it on my iPad, we should be treated equally.
No, well, what I'm saying is, if I'm reading that and you're reading War and Peace, we should be treated equally.
Exactly, yeah.
But I don't think that's going to happen. I mean, I think the way that things happen now is, and, and we were saying that, we were saying, we wouldn't stop any kid from reading War and Peace, but we still have the policy that says you can't have your, your, your electronic devices turned on from the time school starts until the time school ends. As you, as you probably remember, I think that when students are not in class, they should be able to use their electronic devices if they, if they want to. But at the very least, and part of this is because I think we do end up selectively enforcing it, and the kids who are doing things that we like get to keep doing them, and the kids who are doing things that we don't like have to stop, even though the impact of that may be the same. If we say, for example, that the reason they can't do it is because we want them engaging with each other, well, they're not engaging anymore whether they're reading War and Peace or whether they're talking to their friend about, in fact, they're more engaged with somebody else if they're talking to their friend about the party last night than they are if they're reading. Now, granted, War and Peace is a great piece of literature, and I hope they are reading literature, but it seems to be contradicting our rationale for why we have the policy.
If I may make a comment here, part of the problem is that if they're going over our internet, they're filtered, and many of the things that you're worried about can't get through, or we try to prevent it to go through. Cellphones don't have that problem. So it, we don't have any way of preventing all the things that by federal law we're supposed to prevent when they're on cellphones. So there's got to be some kind of language that differentiates permitted activity from unpermitted activity, and that's, I think, what is trying to be done here.
Mrs. Parker?
And I guess I would, I would chime in on a couple of things. One is that I, I hope that in, what, what my intention is with this new language is to have these devices available for academic purposes. And really, for the most parts, kids have, they have their lunch break where they might be reading War and Peace, but mostly I was imagining that happening during class times. Like, you know, my student can go outside and, and read, and maybe it's free choice reading, but it's under the direction of a teacher. And, and I really do think it's appropriate for the board to delineate that this, this device is used for academic purposes during the school day. But the other issue is that, well, there's two other things. One is that Mrs. Deacon and I, right after Mrs. Deacon first came on the board, we had the pleasure of being at a fishbowl activity that Jonathan LaMaster was running with a set of teachers from two of our high schools. And it happened that they were talking about electronic media and social network, electronic media, and use of electronic devices on campus. They ran this fishbowl, and we were just sitting in the back, and these teachers started saying, you know, the school board has put in this policy about the kids not using cellphones during the school day. And some of them were saying, you know, we really questioned that at first, and then they said, but you know, and this was unanimous. We feel like this is the most important board policy that's been put in place to promote a healthier school climate. We cannot believe the positive change that has caused on our campuses, and this was two separate campuses, the kids are walking down the hallways now again, talking to each other. It feels like it used to feel, and they were so, they felt like it was the best thing that we'd ever done. And so I, you know, I'm sure Mrs. Deacon can attest to that, we were sitting there going, wow, you know. It really felt positive, like this was a positive change, not a negative. But the last thing I want to say is the idea that Mrs. Cordero brings up of it being enforced unevenly, it is. I know that we have one school that is not enforcing this policy, and it is the one school that I would say is actually suffering the most for school climate issues in general. And what I would ask is, if we have a policy in place that's been passed by a board majority that it's enforced evenly across the district, and I think it's really important for there not to be exceptions or, you know, it's too hard for us to do, I do think it's important that all of our campuses and all of our students are treated fairly and equally.
I couldn't agree more, and that's something that we will need to work with principals on and assistant principals. With having Marlon Sumter in now in place, he's actually meeting on a monthly basis with our assistant principals. Just yesterday, he had a meeting really looking at safety and school climate and that kind of thing. And so I think we, we have a better way in which we can make sure that there's more consistency. And this is because we're changing this policy slightly, that gives us another really good reason to bring it back to the assistant principals, the principals, and make it very clear that we want that consistency. And it is happening at two of our sites for the most part, as much as I can tell, and one not, so there's no reason the other one can't be.
Well, I mean, really, it's happening at six, seven of our sites really well.
Well, yes, exactly. I'm just talking high schools, yeah.
Have the principal seen this language?
Yes, I sent this out about three, four weeks ago.
Any comment?
I got one comment from, one, one principal said, yahoo, thank you so much for bringing us into the 21st century.
Mrs. Cordero?
I just had a quick question. So does this apply to laptops? Are students allowed to bring laptops to campus and use them?
Yes, they can, yes.
So if the student was outside of class, they would be, they could, like, be sitting at lunch on their laptop?
Under staff direction.
Just under staff direction, or, I mean.
Good question. I don't know that that's actually something that I, at this point, they don't, they're not supposed to be doing that, usually in a library or in a classroom. they don't, they're not supposed to be doing that. Usually in a library, or in a classroom, or that, under staff direction, or someone.
But as we go more and more wireless, that's going to happen.
I would say, once again, if it's academic purposes, I think that would be perfectly fine for them to be sitting outside with their laptop, working. So, it would, under those circumstances, once again, be if a teacher or staff came along and saw it, it would be a discretionary issue. Are they working on academic issues or not?
I...
Mrs. Deacon?
I was just going to say, we're going to be chasing this policy, you know, we're going to be running to keep up with technology, I mean, and especially as we go wireless. And while I really support this notion of academic use only, I can see how enforcement of that's going to be really difficult. I mean, it's one thing to police someone who's got a cellphone and say, you know, take, turn it off and give it to me, but to go up and look on every single laptop, or, you know, mobile device and scrutinize what they're looking at, it's going to be really hard. So, we're going to just have to keep, and other, you know, we won't be inventing the will, everybody else will be doing the same thing.
Mrs. Cordero?
Yeah, I feel like, you know, at the community college level, we've kind of gone through this to a certain extent already, in the sense that at first, we were trying to really restrict students from bringing laptops into class, and because it was, we were always worried that they were doing something other than, they're sitting in the back of the room, are they doing something other than actually, you know, taking notes for class, et cetera. And now, we've pretty much accepted that it's almost a futile attempt, and on top of which, it's probably counterproductive, because laptops can be really good for students in the classroom. So, I guess, but, so I guess that's one thing. My other concern is, I have to just sort of fess up, it's more of a civil liberties issue. I mean, I'm thinking, okay, yes, we want students to be doing productive things, but when they're sitting at lunchtime, hanging out with their friends, you know, if they're having a conversation about what movie they saw yesterday, I mean, that's not any more productive than if they were on their cellphone having that conversation. When I was in high school, a group of us used to get together at lunchtime every day and play cards. Are students not going to be allowed to play cards anymore because it's not an academic pursuit? I feel like we're trying to control their free time, and that's the part that I'm objecting to. They're not, if they're, as long as they're not doing anything illegal, I'm not sure why they shouldn't be allowed to do it. And so, to me, it seems more like we should be focusing more on teaching them how to use the technology appropriately, rather than fighting a losing battle against the technology, because there's no way we're ever going to win that battle.
Mrs. Parker?
Well, I guess I would say that there are technologies that we'll be racing to keep up with, like laptops. But in terms of things like cellphones, I don't think that that is that hard, especially because we've had so many schools do that so successfully, and it really makes such a positive difference. And I guess, for us as a board, the expulsions that we've seen, and what we've seen nationally, where kids use cellphones in particular for really unfortunate purposes, and really sad outcomes, I think largely because, well, I don't want to say it's because they're young, because adults do the same stupid things. But I feel like it puts us, and it puts our other students and our teachers at such risk to have those on during the school day, that I, I think there are a lot of other positive technologies, and I think even cellphones can have some good uses in the classroom. But I don't, I guess I don't see that as a civil liberties issue as much, because there's just so many, they have so many other ways of communicating and doing and talking, and that's really more of a safety issue.
As I indicated, I think this change is a great step in the right direction. I'm willing to live with it, with the acknowledgement that times are changing. And in every study I've seen lately, the emphasis is on technology, and mobility, and e-learning, and internet, and wireless, and we're going towards, you know, we're going to have three campuses soon that are wireless. And we're going to face this issue. And the cellphone, you know, I think only people like me have a cellphone. I think today, they have something that can do much more than just use as a telephone, with all the gadgets that are around. And so, we're going, kids are going to have, you know, all these different things that they can use anyplace, anywhere. And trying to stop them, as I said two years ago in the campaign, it's going to be very, very difficult. But this is a great step in the right direction. If we can, for the moment, create it where it's academic purposes, I'm happy with that. Yes?
I was only going to make one final comment here for myself, is that you've got to remember that these are minors, and you've got to remember there's a federal law about us protecting the minors. And I know this is a complicated issue, but in some way or form, we do have to have some kind of a policy that gives us the right to protect the minors from things they might get involved in over the internet and other stuff.
Now, just look at the portal we had demonstrated here at the last meeting. With wireless, a student can go out and contact that portal and do homework, do research, everything. And I guess, as long as a teacher has directed them to, I presume that's going to be okay, you know? And so, yes. Mrs. Deacon?
Dr. Hayden, one last question. A lot of college campuses, I've been on, block cellphone reception in their classrooms. Is that difficult, expensive to do?
I don't know how expensive it would be to do. I know it's doable. We can investigate the cost of that. I'm not exactly sure you want to do that, because cellphones are now being used by teachers as personal response devices. They're being used as calculators. They're being used as homework assignments to have chat groups, because you can do chats on telephones, a chat group over a mathematics problem. I mean, there's, they're being used, and so, I'm not too sure you really want to block usage in classrooms.
Okay. Dr. Noel, you had a question on the...
I have a question on...
Fifty-one, forty-four?
No, I went up to sixty-one, sixty-two page.
What page is that?
It's the next item. So, like, you know, I'm...
Oh, next item?
Yeah, it's the next item.
Okay, are we done with this item?
My question on the other one, I looked at it and looked at it and thought, nah.
Okay, okay. And so, that's the first reading of, so now we go to the 6,000 series. And what page, Dr. Noel?
Nine. I have one small suggestion. Paragraph one, two, okay? Bottom line, student subgroup, class, student subgroup, comma, classroom, comma, grade level, comma, or school site. I think that should be an and. It doesn't make sense as or. No, I'm sorry.
Okay, it's on page nine.
I'm sorry, page nine.
Second paragraph, it's a four-line, a four-line paragraph.
As appropriate, assessment results shall be decided by student subgroup, classroom, grade level, or school site to, oh, and, and school site. Makes sense to me.
And it says as appropriate, because there are going to be times when it shouldn't be the whole nine yards, but if it says as appropriate, that's okay.
That sounds good.
Mrs. Parker?
My comment is on page one, sixty-one, fifty-eight.
Oh, I think I, well, go ahead. I think I have that from you though already.
Okay.
Why?
On the...
It's on, for BP sixty-one, fifty-eight, and it's on the, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, paragraph down.
Starting with the written agreement?
Yes.
Yes, and the last line says, and in, go ahead.
The line says, because excessive leniency in the duration of independent study assignments may result in a student falling behind his or her peers, and increase the risk of dropping out of school, comma, independent study assignments shall be no more than. I just wanted to clarify that it should be the due date for the completion of independent study assignments. So, I just wanted to insert that before independent study.
Yes, and I have that from you, exactly.
Yeah.
Thank you.
If that's okay with my fellow board members, because I read that through the first few times, and I was going, what exactly is it trying to say here? So, that would be my one suggestion.
Any others? Mrs. Deacon?
Actually, we warp speed past, page seventeen, I had in the 5,000s.
Oh.
And it's just, it's a question, but I don't know. At the very, at the bottom of the page, this is talking about student medication and their ability to administer medication if the students are capable of doing that. And so, on number two, and I guess it's the third paragraph from the bottom, where we're listing the requirements...
What page?
Page seventeen.
Seventeen, okay.
Okay. So, we're requiring a release from civil liability for students who administer medication to themselves. The next paragraph has to do with a designee by a parent or guardian of someone other than an employee to be able to administer medication. Is there a reason we would not want the release of liability in that case as well? I mean, I understand the first part, I just wasn't sure why we would treat...
Yeah, I think it's probably just assumed, but we may as well state it.
So, if we are going to state it, what I would do is just take that sentence, number two, and add it as a number four, with some language, something along the lines of administration of medication by a parent, guardian, designated, who is not an employee of the district, would release the district from civil liability. I'm just trying to imagine someone who's not an employee coming on our campus administering medication to a student, something goes wrong, and we haven't, and there's no release of liability.
But are you suggesting that we simply make that statement in our policy, or that we get an active release?
Well, we're requiring, no, I think just the statement.
Okay.
Similar to the treatment of the self-medication.
Okay, anything more on F5?
I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
I just have one question, it's not a change.
It was just on page twenty, the one about refusal to harm or destroy animals, and it says, except classes and activities conducted as part of agricultural education that provide instruction on the care, management, and evaluation of domestic animals. Do we offer any courses like that that would meet that requirement?
Currently, no.
Not that I'm aware of now.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Never know.
You're someone who wants goats in our school. Do you know this person? Yeah, yeah. Actually, she makes quite a compelling case for raising goats.
We have a goat academy, we ought to have a vet academy.
Okay. Should we go to item G? Dr. Noel had one item to review.
Oh, yeah, but I already said what I wanted to say.
Okay.
Therefore, I move to adopt D4.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And...
I think we did, didn't we do?
We had three as well.
Oh, we did. Oh, D, okay. What is D3?
That was me. I'm sorry, I didn't have, I didn't ask this ahead of time, and I should have. But Mr. Hentjeck is going to Washington DC for $468, but two teachers are going to San Francisco for close to $4,000.
I want Dave to brag about this.
Okay.
I was contacted by ASBO, and given the opportunity to attend this conference, and they offered a scholarship of paying for the conference, my hotel, and $150 towards travel expenses. So, ASBO was picking up most of the tab for this conference. And had to apply for the scholarship, and then get accepted, and was fortunate enough to receive it.
And how timely is the topic?
It's pretty timely. It's pretty, I have to say, yeah, indoor air quality, I like it a lot. Well, then I will...
Well, that begs the question, why is it $4,000 for two people in San Francisco?
Yeah, I wondered that too, because some of us are going to CSBA in San Francisco for considerably less than that, for the same amount of time.
Don't know, okay. It did stick out as...
Unless the registration for this conference is really expensive, it seems like...
It could be.
It could be. I'm trying to, I don't, I looked at this a while ago, and I don't remember what the registration is. Oftentimes, these national associations are quite expensive.
Maybe in a board brief, you could just follow up and let us know with the breakout, because it seems like...
Are you sure you want in a board brief? Can she just call you?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
You don't need it.
Okay, do we have approval for D3?
Yes, I'll move to approve D3.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. H, I, and J, Dr. Noel, will you take the gavel and handle H, I, and J for your last meeting? Will you take the gavel for H, I, and J?
H, I, and J?
Yeah, coming events.
Oh, my God. Coming events. Anything about coming events, anyone?
There is a memorial service for...
I've wanted it, it's...
Yeah, I know. There's a memorial service...
We know.
For Bruce O'Neil. He was superintendent, not superintendent, he was a board member for 12 years, back in the early 50s. It's December 4th at 1:00 at Presbyterian Church. He was the superintendent when I was going through the school system. And he was just one of those men that was all education, everything he did in his life, other than run his business, the barn, he was always after, you know, helping children. So, it's just nice to remember somebody who's like yourself, Dr. Noel, who's been on the board 12 years. I'm not sure how many times he was president, we didn't keep track in those days, but I'm sure he was president at least once, probably more.
Okay. Any other thing about coming events? All right, we'll go to I, future agenda items.
I'd like to put an item on the, I've noticed several times, I've raised this before, and I'm not sure how we want to address it, if it really needs to be an agenda item. Well, I think it does. Having a translator available for the full meeting. I noticed that our translator left before our break, and I'm not criticizing the translator, because I think this had been part of our policy.
We've directed her to leave.
Yeah.
After two hours of not needing her.
And I think, unfortunately, that if a Spanish-speaking person came to the end of the meeting and wanted to address something at the end of the agenda, there would not be a translator available. And so, I realize that very often, we may have a translator sitting in the room, not doing anything. But if the translator isn't there, we're really denying access to people who need it. So, I'm, at any rate, we can, there's probably lots of issues around that to discuss, but I'd just like to have that on the agenda.
Got it. Any other suggestions for future agenda items?
Actually, I do have one, and that is that we just, the final report for the Latino Achievement Summit has just been finalized, and I would like to see that come to the board for discussion soon.
This is a very difficult item. Item J, adjournment, the meeting is adjourned.
Right on time, you did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Noel.
My moment of power.